Special Station of the Commissioners for the sole purpose of opening bids for the courthouse. And we will begin, you know, that process. We have a Division One category of demolition. And this is from tongue in blank. Construction.
Okay, from tongue in blank. The bid amount is three hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred twenty dollars. That would be for number one.
And the second bid for the demo division is Green Demo.
Okay. This one is four hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Here, Division Two, building concrete and site concrete. Tongue in blank.
Four hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars.
And our third division is Masonary. Zawkowski Construction.
Okay, this bid is nine hundred eleven thousand five hundred eight dollars.
Second Masonary, SSRG Group, Structural Systems, Air Group.
Seven hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty dollars.
And our fourth division, Metals. One bid, Wilson Iron Works.
Okay, this bid is for one hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. Hey, this one has an alternate. Just a labor rate of... All right, I'm having trouble reading this writing. Okay. So we got some alternates that are very difficult to read. Looks like ironworker Foreman, one hundred and five dollars, a labor rate. An ironworker. Ninety-five dollars, labor rate. Or alternates, that's all it says on alternates. Alternate bid amount, three percent of the contract amount. This one's difficult to read because it's in rote and not clear.
General Trades, our next division. Tongue in blank.
Okay, this bid amount is nine hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars. Alternate bid amount is seven thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars. It is not saying... It is not saying which one, it goes... Okay, I'm... I'm seeing one through four NA. But here is an alternate. What I'm seeing is one through four NA here on this alternate. Hard to see what that's for. Okay, sure. Okay, alternate for the performance and payment bond.
We have another, General Trades. Gibson and Lewis.
Okay. So this one is six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars even. Excludes zero eight nine one zero zero Louvers. Alternate number one, window replacement, add one hundred six thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars.
Next division is Interior Carpentry. Gibson Lewis.
Okay, this one is five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars even.
Second bid on Interior Carpentry. Whitner Interior Systems, Indiana.
This one is five hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Okay, add for performance and payment bond, eight thousand five hundred dollars.
A second bid on Interior Carpentry. Midland Engineering Company.
Seven hundred ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars.
Division Seven, Roofing, Sheet Metal. And the bidder is EC, Abella.
Eight hundred eight thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars. Okay, this just has labor rates, roofers, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-one cents per hour. Sheet metal, labor rates, one hundred thirty-four dollars eighty-four cents per hour.
Division Eight, Storefront, Windows and Glazing. Time Key Enterprise.
One million, two hundred seventy-six thousand eight hundred eleven dollars. Alternate number one, window replacement, add three hundred forty thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars. So, that alternate bid amount total with the bid would be... That's not right, alternate bid amount, one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars even. Okay, so I'm seeing here on the alternate number one, their window replacement is three hundred forty thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars. And then it has an alternate bid amount on the next page. Doesn't say what it's... It just says alternate bid amount, one million, one hundred thirty-one thousand dollars even. Yeah, just have to figure it out.
Okay, we have a second bid on the storefront windows and glazing, buyers' glass and mirrors company.
Okay, this bid amount is one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars even. They have labor rates, do you need me to read the labor rates, don't matter.
Flooring and Tile, Division Nine. Master Tile Incorporated, Arville.
One hundred forty-seven thousand dollars even. Okay, we got some required breakout totals. So this has a, this has a breakout, one hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars for the carpet. Seven thousand sixty-four dollars. Vinyl Cove Base.
So we also have a bid here from the same company. Labeled nine A, from Master Tile.
Okay. Okay, this bid amount is two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars even. Okay, and here the required breakout is floor tile is two hundred forty-five thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars. The wall tile is twenty-three thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Okay, we have a second bid on the flooring and tile. This is from... BMTB Flooring Incorporated. We also have a nine A on this bid as well.
Okay, this bid amount is seventy-six thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars.
And the same deal, MTB Flooring, nine A bid.
Hey, this bid amount is one hundred twenty thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars.
Division Ten, Painting and Wall Covering. It's from Stans, Painting and Decorating.
Okay, this bid amount is four hundred eighteen thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Alternate number three, Existing Exterior Guardrail and Handrails, Deduct, six hundred dollars. Hey, there are some alternates, do I need to read those, they're... Number three, voluntary alternate number one, do those need to be read as well? All right, there.
We have a second, Painting and Wall Covering. Oostervana and Sons. That's O-O-S-T-E-R-B-A-A-N.
This one is seven hundred forty-four thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Now this one also has an alternate, number four, Existing Interior Guardrail and Handrails, Deduct, two thousand four hundred eighty dollars.
Skipping Division Eleven. No bid. Division Twelve, Plumbing. Arctic Engineering.
Hey, this bid amount is five hundred forty thousand dollars even.
Division Thirteen, HVAC. And the Arctic Engineering.
Okay, this bid amount is one million, two hundred five thousand dollars even.
Division Fourteen, Electrical and Low Voltage. H&amp;T Electrical.
Hey, this one is one million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Add Payment and Performance Bond, fifteen thousand dollars.
In the second bid for the Electrical. FISO or FISO Electric Service Incorporated, Bogansport.
One million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars even.
Division Fifteen, Landscaping. Lakeshore Landscaping, Valpo.
Sixteen thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Division Sixteen is Earthwork and Site Utilities. That was Delta Three.
Three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars even. Alternate number two, Retaining Wall, Excavation and Backfill at North and Portion of the South, add three thousand six hundred dollars even. For Performance, oh, see, down here, alternate number seven, Payment and Performance Bond, add six thousand dollars.
Division Seventeen, Asphalt Paving, Parking Accessories. Down in Country.
Seventy-six thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars.
We have a second bid for the Asphalting Accessories. Luminaut, L-U-M-I-N-A-U-T.
Okay.
Correction, Central Paving.
Central Paving. Total cost, sixty-seven thousand four hundred forty dollars. Notes and Condition, an eight hundred thousand dollar patching allowance is included in price.
Division Eighteen. Gasoline. Tongue in blank.
One hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred dollars even. Alternate bid amount, Performance and Payment Bond, one thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars.
Okay, that concludes the bids. Nation, you want to say anything about the timeline?
These bids go for review and evaluation?
Um, yeah, so, I am hoping, I'll defer to Ryan on this, that we should be able to present that to the Commissioners next week, is that doable? Obviously, they're gonna need to review these, make sure everything checks out. But it looks like we came in with about three or four hundred thousand dollars to spare. So we're under where we needed to be.
And looking for more.
Well, yes, but we were... We came in where we need to, so... Yeah.
The one, uh, Division Eleven. Fire suppression, is that...
No bids because there's not SPACT. We did not solicit for that category, that's why there were no bids.
Why is that, is that an expense that's not showing? Okay, any questions, Council, from the Commissioners? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn the special session. Second. Okay, meeting's adjourned.